All right, good evening. We're going to call this meeting to order. It's Tuesday, March 8th. And just a reminder to the community that we are starting our meeting with our public FY '23 budget hearing, and then the regular school committee meeting will follow that meeting once it's concluded. So please silence all cell phones for the duration of the meeting, please, and we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, if I could request a motion, please, to open the public hearing for the 2023 fiscal year budget.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And we're going to begin with the budget presentation, which will be done by Mrs. Flynn.
Andy.
And Dr. Bailey.
Yeah, all right. So thank you, everyone. So I'd like to just start off by reviewing our mission and vision, which nothing has changed. The mission of the Acushnet Public Schools in partnership with staff, parents, and community is to promote student success, growth, and learning in a safe and supportive environment. And the vision of our school district is to be a high-performing school district where all students are afforded the opportunities to realize their potential. And again, our core values remain the same. We value cultivating student enthusiasm and creativity. We value enhancing students' critical thinking and problem-solving capabilities and instilling a growth mindset in students so that they learn to persevere, to achieve their hopes and dreams. So it's really about lifelong learning. When they leave Acushnet, they'll be able to take on some of those skills throughout their life. And as you know, we've had this mantra of two schools, one district. From the entry findings, four years ago when I started, we had four main pillars that came out of those learning listening tours, were all areas that needed attention. So alignment, and that focused on curriculum alignment, vertical alignment between the grade levels. And this was according to all stakeholders. All stakeholders throughout the district were interviewed, and none of this has changed. And I think, you know, I think most people see a difference since we've started four years ago, the two schools were very separate. And I think people have come to the realization that we're on one campus, we work together, and I think people realize they're our students. And we all put a year into them, and we work really hard together to do what is right. And, you know, we see a lot of positives with that. This just goes into, oops, sorry about that, the listening to our feedback, those go into that a little more deeply with the pillars. In terms of alignment, the teachers feel that the curriculum and the resources used lack consistency and alignment. And if you can recall, four years ago, there really was no curriculum adoption cycles. There was outdated curriculum. Also, stakeholders had expressed concern with the lack of vertical alignment across grade levels. And specifically, the transition from the elementary school to the middle school, a lot of parents expressed concern with that. So again, we really worked hard to make it two schools, one district. In terms of communication, teachers expressed a desire to collaborate with colleagues beyond their existing teams. We had staff members that didn't even know people from the other buildings. We do a lot of our professional development together now, when necessary, as needed. And staff field communication between the teachers and administration was inconsistent at the time. Student support, staff was very concerned with the lack of effective support and programming for struggling learners. Staff and students expressed concerns about meeting the social, emotional needs of all students, and obviously, with the pandemic, that remains to be true. And as far as community, all stakeholders value a sense of community and belonging, but teachers expressed a concern about maintaining that type of positive culture. So we've worked really hard, and we continue, we're not making major changes with our goals. Everything is consistent. Strategic objectives have remained the same: achieving academic excellence for all students, creating thriving social and emotional learning experiences for all students, and strengthening partnerships with families and the larger community. And again, all of this work was done, not in isolation, but with all stakeholders throughout the school district and the school community. And I realize this is not a meeting about data. We had a meeting a few weeks back on MCAS scores and benchmarks, but I put this in here just to show the need. If you look at ELA, you'll see that 50% of kids are meeting expectations, either meeting or exceeding. So that means, you know, the other 50% are not, right? Math, 42% are meeting or exceeding. So we need to continue to address that. Also, we need to continue to address the pandemic learning loss. So as a result of the stakeholders' input, with all the listening tours and work that we've done, we continue to have the same guiding priorities. Nothing has really changed there. We want updated, highly-rated, rigorous curriculum. You see a lot of that work has been done, but you also know that we can't do it all in one school year. Enhance curriculum instruction and assessment. Maintain and enhance technology, infrastructure, and equipment. Prior to the pandemic, we only had a couple of grade levels that had one-to-one with the Chromebooks, and since the pandemic, we now have the entire district one-to-one. So we really want to make sure that we're maintaining all of our technology and infrastructure that we put in place. Strengthen response to intervention and supporting all learners. We want to continue to address pandemic learning loss. You've heard about academies that happen in the summertime, acceleration academies at the breaks, so we're continuing to do that. Strengthen social and emotional learning and providing impactful professional development. We want to make it meaningful to all of our teaching staff, and we want to continue to maintain reasonable class sizes. So the budget process. Starting back in December through now, we basically have, you know, asked our administrators to put forth their requests. It's been a very inclusive process where they work, they ask their teachers what the needs are. So in conjunction with the staff request, they get that all to our offices. And then the leadership team needs to discuss all the district needs, and then the budget subcommittee met in February and March to review the budget with the leadership team, as well as subsequent meetings after that. I just want to say that, you know, originally, those requests that were brought forth brought us to a 5.8% increase, okay? But I want to thank Sarah Gomes, Jen Downing, Kristen Flynn, for the work and the amount of hours that we've put in to make necessary cuts to get this to a more manageable number, which I'm going to review in a minute. I just think it's important for people to realize that we did whatever we could to put things into our grants that were allowable by grants. So for example, we had in an SEL curriculum that's needed, that is allowable to get into the grant, we did that. But you'll see, as we go through the budget tonight, lots of fixed costs that we have no control over. So our preliminary budget is $15,898,588. And that's an increase of $460,377, which brings us to a 3% increase. And what this budget does, it maintains level services, it continues to address pandemic learning loss, it continues with the new curriculum adoption that our district so desperately needs, and it includes two new full-time positions, which I will get into depth in a bit.
Okay, so what I'm going to do is I'm going to talk a little bit about what makes up that $15,898,000. And then the second part of my presentation will be what makes up that increase, like why do we see that 3% increase? So as you can see, the budget is, I broke it down into these categories: salaries, that's our largest part of the budget, tuition, student services. And student services includes transportation, health services, student activities, but the main one for that is transportation. Instruction, facilities, and district leadership. So I'm going to go through each one with you all now. So salaries. Of course, that's our largest component of the budget. It is $9,521,389. And that makes up, we have a total staff of 152.8 FTEs, okay? So in our operating budget, we have 132.6, and then the balance of that, 20.2, are in grants and funds. We use our ESAR grant, that's Special Ed IDEA grant, Title I grants, and preschool and school lunch revolving funds. So we're going to go through salaries a little bit more. So again, here's what makes up our salaries: district leadership and administration. And I put the FTE in the amount that is budgeted for each component. Instructional leadership, 14.4 FTE, and that's about, .7 is coming from the Special Ed grant. Classroom teachers, of course, that's our biggest component, 78 FTE, and FTE is full-time equivalent. So it could be one person, it could be two people, and a 50% person, you know, it could be a 40 and a 60, but that's, you know, that's how we report it with the FTEs. So with classroom teachers, we have two and a half being charged to a grant, to the Title I grant, and the preschool revolving fund. So that's the tuition that we take in from those families that pay tuition to come to our preschool. Therapists, 4.0, and that is OT, speech, yeah, OT and speech are our therapists this year. Substitute teachers, now if you recall, last year, we included four building base subs. So those are included in that amount there, the four building base subs, two in each building, and also an amount for per DIEM subs, because when we have more than two people out in a building, we do still need to call in those per DIEM subs, so we need some money for that. Paraprofessionals, we have 21 FTE, paraprofessionals. Six of those are being paid for by the IDEA grant, and again, that's the big Special Ed 240 grant, you might have heard it said that way, and the preschool revolving fund. We have five counselors, adjustment counselors, guidance counselors, a school psychologist. Attendance and residency, that's our residency officer, and medical and health, and those are our school nurses. Finally, we have food service employees. Those are funded in total by the school lunch revolving fund, so nothing from school lunch is in this budget, except for a small amount for unpaid meals that we are required to reimburse by law. Student activity stipends, these are your club leaders, any intramurals, coaches, that type, those types of stipends. School security, that's the, our share of the school resource officer that we share with the Acushnet Police Department, and facilities. And two of those are funded by the ESAR grant. So we were fortunate with the ESAR grant, we were able to add, as you know, a custodian and a maintenance person. So that's brought our facility staff up, but it's only been funded by ESAR. Okay, our next largest component is tuitions. As you know, we tuition out students to New Bedford High, Fairhaven High, Bristol County Agricultural, and there's also school choice students, where they can choose to attend other local schools that accept school choice. So our tuitions this year are $3,811,000. You can see what comprises that. We have 17 students at Bristol County Aggie, 21 students at New Bedford High School, this is predicted for next year, 225 at Fairhaven High, and 26 school choice. So you can see that that is a rather, a very, our second largest component of the budget We also have our out-of-district tuition, collaborative tuition to our collaborative placements and our private placements, we don't have that this year. And then we also have the offset of our circuit breaker revenue carryover. So we have that for tuition. Our next largest component is student services. The bulk of it, as I said, is transportation, and these here that you see are all non-salary expenses, okay? So when you see medical and health services, that's just supplies for the nurses' offices, student activity supplies for the clubs. Transportation, of course, is our big bus and our special ed and out-of-district transportation. So breaking down transportation, because it is a rather large amount, we have our regular day, our yellow, big yellow bus, that's a bus contract, that's just about $720,000 for next year. Special education, the out-of-district transportation, just under $300,000. Homeless transportation, late bus, and foster student transportation make up the rest. So the last, our fourth largest component is instructional services. So you have a lot of your books and supplies there, the curriculum, ELL supplies, psychological services and supplies, professional development, therapeutic services, instructional technology, and curriculum materials. So our largest ones there are curriculum materials, of course, and our instructional Finally, facilities, these are the facilities expenses. We have $40,000 in custodial services expenses, so that's your supplies and contracts for custodial and facility supplies. Heating of buildings, utilities other than heat, and maintenance. So you see, you might wonder why heating is broken out from other utilities, because that's how we have to report it to the Department of Ed, so that's a separate category. So I just maintained the Department of Ed function codes here. So finally, our smallest component is the central office, district administration, school committee expenses, legal expenses, expenses of the superintendent's office and the business office, and then the administrative technology, which are some of our software programs, such as the attendance recording software. Okay, so what you just heard was what makes up the entire budget. Now this, what we're going to talk about now is what changed. So we are increasing $460,000 from last year, so what makes up that? And as Dr. Bailey said, a lot of it is in fixed costs that, you know, we don't have a lot of control over or any. So you can see, the biggest driver of our change is salaries. Of course, we have, our entire school is, our budget is predominantly salaries. We, our labor, most of our, you know, the school has educators and administrators, support staff, so that's where the most of our costs come from, so of course, most of our increases are coming from there. Tuition, we're going to talk about that. Facilities, instruction, district administration, professional development, and we had some decreases actually in contract services and transportation. So I'm going to go through each one of those, so you can see what makes up, now this is the most important part, is what makes up that extra amount that we're asking for for next year? Okay, so salaries. You saw all of the salary positions that we have budgeted for. So any contractual increases make up about $203,000, and new positions about $133,000, okay? So we have two new positions that we're looking to add this year, and I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Bailey for the, for this part.
Thank you. So the first one is a library media specialist at the elementary school. And you know that for the past several years, this has been a priority of families, teachers, to get these libraries back up and running and functional. Last year, as you know, we brought on a library media specialist at Ford Middle School, it's going very well, and this is something we'd like to replicate at the elementary school. We know that we could not do that in one year. We also know that it's a multi-year phased project where, to update the resources in the library, the books, we know that we can't do that all in one year, but we need someone in charge to take the helm and go through the books, the outdated books. And, you know, we're trying to get our children into an environment that's really suitable for kids today. So presently, at the elementary school, we have unused space and outdated materials. In fact, a lot of our seasoned staff joke that there's books in that library that they had when they were students using the Dewey Decimal System signing out these books, and there's still the same books in the library, not a lot of new books. We talk about equitable learning for all students, level the playing field for student access to materials, guidance. Many students don't have a proper library at home or technology. This would be the hub that they can go to and access that. This would have a positive impact on student achievement, graduation rates, and achievement for diverse, achievement for diverse and at-risk populations. And it would really just be the heart of the school. So the vision is that the, this person, this library media specialist, will connect with teachers to enhanced units of study, provide teachers with additional support with technology and materials. It would be a warm, welcoming, updated environment for students to pursue the love of reading and also their interest in other content areas, all the content areas. They have to do research on these content areas, that would be the place. We see ourselves connecting with the Acushnet Public Library to serve a younger population of students, for story hour for two- and three-year-olds, and again, this gets children used to the fact of, this is where I'm going to come to school someday. Project-based learning. It really becomes the school hub with the goal to enhance literacy among all grade levels. And this is also a very important one, this last bullet, it's a place to belong. As we continue to address social, emotional learning and that sense of belonging, we have placed a very high priority on this in the district, and all the stakeholders have been surveyed, and SEL continues to be a high priority for folks. So this, these are pictures of the current library. You can see it's dark, a lot of old materials. You see in that bottom picture on the left, you see that it's kind of used for storage because people don't access it because everything is just so outdated and old. We have no one to keep up on, with the library. So I'd like to show you some examples of what it could look like. These are just some examples of a modern space. And these are really spaces that have changed over the years from when you and I maybe have gone to school. You see more soft elements, it's a much more welcoming environment. And again, these are just examples, but first, we need someone leading the way to get us to this point with the project. And it will take us a phased-in approach to get those resources that we desperately need in the library. The second new position that I'd like to discuss is a district nurse. Currently, and you know, we've had our issues this school year with nursing. Currently, in both buildings, our school nurses see between 40 and 60 students per school who visit daily, who visit the nurse's office daily. With each visit, the nurses have mandated paperwork, and it's very hard to keep up on with the volume of students who need the nurse's attention. The district nurse would flow between the two schools, providing the following services: it's very hard for us to keep up on our vision and hearing screening, so this person would be able to do that. Substituting, I'm going to talk about that in a minute, mandated paperwork, and also parent outreach, making those phone calls to parents. And again, it's very difficult to do that when you have five students or seven students at a time, and you're dealing with situations. But I want to stress here that there's been a huge nursing shortage, not only in schools, but in hospitals. We went for several weeks this school year without a nurse, and we tried to get nursing, nurses from an agency when we could. It was fine, it was expensive, but sometimes, we couldn't even get nurses from an agency. So because we've had difficulty in securing coverage, it's been a huge issue in the district. Also, I want to point out that the cost for the agency is extremely high, so hiring our own person would actually be cost-effective. And I just want to point out that these needs are really not unique to COVID, that these are regular nursing needs that have happened over time, that our nurses continue to be overwhelmed. And talking to other superintendents, we all talk about similar, similar issues that nurses need additional help. And I know other districts are adding secretaries to nurse's office, et cetera. We just want the main nursing services. And so with substituting, if our nurse is out, we wouldn't have to be scrambling to find a nurse from an agency who might not be there. We'll have a nurse in-house, and that, those nurses, all three, would be very busy.
Okay, so you heard about the first, our largest increase was salaries, contractual, and new positions. So I'm going to go through the rest of our budget adjustments here, just to make sure this is kind of touchy.
Facilities.
So our next, our next one is instruction. So instruction is increasing by $26,000, and some of it is technology expenses, and that there you see is to increase the lines to purchase additional Chromebooks, new Chromebooks. We first purchased our Chromebooks, I would say, over five years ago, so this is part of the cycle of renewing them and replacing them. So we put in some extra money for that. And curriculum materials, again, we are still on our path to get current and well-rated curriculum, so we need another $17,862 for that. Utilities, our utilities are increasing, and this is all electricity, by $50,000. This is based on our actuals that we've had year-to-date. We are, for the past several years, we've been consistently in deficit in electricity, so we've been trying to increase the line item for that. We have a small amount in the ESAR grant, it's $10,000 for each building, so that's already factored into this, that we're asking, the additional amount we're asking for. So we're hoping that that will get us to where we need to go, because we're going to have a deficit again this year in, in electricity and likely oil. Okay, our biggest increase, actually, tuition is a decrease, well, it's a total increase. Our out-of-district is decreasing by $250,000. So we have a collaborative tuition increase, but we also have, we don't have any private tuition scheduled for next year, so that's a large decrease of $262,000. And we also are having a circuit breaker revenue increase. So what circuit breaker is, is the Department of Ed will give you funds towards certain eligible special education expenditures, and it's based on your history of eligible costs the previous year. So our circuit breaker that we received this year, which we will use towards next year's budget, went up by almost $63,000. And I will say, we probably will see a decrease next year because we won't have that larger private school tuition. So, you know, as it goes up, you can expect, you know, sometimes it to go down because of your population, okay? So in the budget right now, we don't have any planned use of our Special Ed stabilization fund or prepaid tuition at this time, because our tuitions, our out-of-district tuitions are very favorable for next year, it's a decrease of $250,000. Our large increase comes from high schools and school choice. So our high school tuition is increasing by about $459,000, and school choice is increasing by $43,000, for a total of $251,000 total between the three categories. So what I'm going to do is, because of those, that high school tuition and that school choice, those are large numbers, so I want to explain those further, okay? So our high schools, as you know, we, we tuition out to Fairhaven High and New Bedford High and Bristol Aggie. So our increase this year is a combination of an increase in the rate per student and also the numbers of students. So for example, So for example, our tuition rates for Fairhaven High and New Bedford High School went up about between 13 and 14% from last year to this year. Now, those rates are calculated by the Department of Ed and then with an adjustment per our tuition agreements. So it's something that is set by the Department of Ed and our tuition agreement. So this year, both of those went up. Fairhaven High went up by just under 1,400 per student. And you know, with about almost 200 students, that makes up a large increase rather quickly. And New Bedford High School went up by just about 1,500 per student. Okay, so we have the increase in the rate and we also have an increase in the number of students. So we have, at Fairhaven High, we're budgeting for two more students next year compared to this year. And actually, New Bedford High School, we're budgeting for one less student next year as opposed to this year. So in those cases, the increase is really that increase in the rate. We also have Bristol Aggie, which a lot of times until last year, really didn't factor in that much into our budget because it was a tuition that was right around, between, right around $2,000. But last year, they started a building project, a building renovation. So the member districts of which we are one are assessed an additional component. So that $2,000 tuition, what used to be, has now gone up to, they're projecting to be about 8,600 per student for next year. So we really have, again, an increase in the rate. And we also have an increase in the number of students projected for, well, actual at Bristol Aggie for next year. 17 students next year versus 10 this year. So it's a combination, again, of the increase in the rate and the increase in the students. Finally, school choice. That's when students can attend local school districts such as ORR, Freetown-Lakeville, Dartmouth, New Bedford. If they wanted to attend a New Bedford school in the lower grade and not high school, they can attend and a Acushnet resident can attend. And there is an assessment back to the Acushnet schools through the state. And that's typically $5,000 per student, but it can be more if they have some special education services attached to them. So we actually have more school choice students next year as well. So hopefully that explains, I know that's a big increase for tuition between the, for tuition to other schools, which we say all of our out-of-district, including the high schools, So as I said, it's a combination basically of the increase in the rates and the numbers of students for that. Yes?
Can you just explain process, maybe a little bit more in-depth on how they decide an appropriate increase in the tuition?
So we have tuition agreements with Fairhaven and New Bedford High School. And those tuition agreements say that the tuition shall be the school choice, the school choice indicator as calculated by the Department of Ed every year. So you start with that as the base. So I have to seek that information from the Department of Ed. So I get that base amount. And then to that, what the agreement then says is you apply two factors. The first factor is a 9% inflation for high school because it is, they say that the increase to educate a high school student is more than a elementary or a middle school. So we have to take that figure, multiply it by 1.09. And because we're looking to next year, the negotiated part of our agreement is that inflation figure. So you multiply by 1.03%. So that's standard in both of our agreements. So it's the indicator, the cost that the Department of Ed populates for us, calculates for us, times 1.09, times 1.03. So in our case, that school choice, what they call the school choice increment, that came from the Department of Ed this year. And it's based on the costs of those schools and the per-people expenditures and a calculation that the Department of Ed does. So the cost to educate students at Fairhaven and New Bedford must have gone up. So that is where we saw the big increase because that base figure is more, so that's.
So in other words, that number comes from the state?
Correct.
But the dollars from the state don't necessarily increase?
Correct. You're going to see in one of the final slides that I believe the state increases right around 30,000 for Chapter 70. It's just the minimum per student increase.
Okay, because that's not, it seems like a large increase. And my question would be, what can we anticipate for next year, for the year after, right?
Right, right. So that's, you know, that's what the question is. Sometimes I've seen that that base number from the Department of Ed has gone down or stayed the same. This year, like I said, it increased by quite a bit. And you know, it's just something, like I said, that's calculated right by the Department of Ed. It's called the school choice tuition rates for Fairhaven and New Bedford that the state calculates. And it used to be publicized right on their webpage, but because so few schools utilize that, we are in a unique position where we tuition out our students for high school. So that was, I had to, I actually have to request that of the, of one of the people in the school finance office from Department of Ed every year. So it's the school choice tuition rate for Fairhaven and New Bedford. So the base rate for Fairhaven was 10,822 and New Bedford was 10,791, to which we then apply that 9% and that 3% as per our tuition agreement with the two schools.
Okay, because this is nearly two-thirds, this total is nearly two-thirds of the total
Correct.
increase in the budget, is that correct? Okay, thank you.
And can you remind the cycle by which we negotiate those agreements?
I believe the new, one of the agreements is a 20-year agreement. I want to say it's New Bedford and Fairhaven also, so.
So these are long-term.
These are long, very long agreements.
I just wanted people to be aware of that.
And I know years ago, when we switched to this school choice indicator, it was a way in which to slow down the inflation of the tuition. Because what was happening is, is that the high schools would, the neighboring schools would set an amount and then just increase it by 3%, 5% every year. So it's starting to become a runaway train. So many years ago, Dr. Donovan, our former superintendent, was very instrumental in getting that based on a known figure that was, you know, set by the Department of Ed. And with Fairhaven, it was a decreasing inflationary percentage. So we finally, at first we were multiplying by, say, 7%, then 6%. So we finally got down to just multiplying by that 3%. And again, that's this year's rate, that's what the Department of Ed calculates. And we just apply that to get to next year. So I think it's as, you know, it's a lot less arbitrary than it was. But unfortunately, this year, it seems like the cost for those schools to educate their students has gone up and that's reflected in the rate that we see.
I'm sorry, did you say when the last time it was negotiated roughly?
Oh gosh, it has to be, I would say, more than five or six years ago. We'd have to look to see when that next time is to, you know, to negotiate. Because it has other subjects of, you know, it talks about other things other than the tuition cost, so.
I know it's several years out.
It was more, it was more than that because we had, when I joined, there was not, the agreement had already been done. So it must be like seven or eight years maybe out.
Because time goes very.
Yeah, absolutely. And that was part of the conversation of the possible regionalization of the high school was to see like if that was going to save us some money. Right, the visibility.
And I did attempt a couple of years ago to discuss opening up the agreements and I was met with resistance on that, you know, so.
Compared to the arrangement we had before, before, we were really paying a lot more money. And had we not, you know, had changes not been made and had the present agreement, we'd be paying, I would, we estimated about 300,000 a year.
I think, yes.
We would be paying right now more in tuition just to Fairhaven. So that's all the, so that agreement really allowed us, you know, allows the committee to use money in other ways to enhance, you know, educational endeavors. So it's been quite a savings, that's why, you know, when we try to open it up, you know, I'm sure they're going to say, let's go back to your previous agreement. Because I don't think, you know, because we really got a good deal out of that. So I mean, I'm just going to remember it. That change.
Okay, so that is tuition. So our next decrease is transportation overall. You can see our regular big bus, big yellow bus contract is increasing. We're in year two of our three-year agreement, so this is the negotiated increase in that. And we are also decreasing special ed transportation. We have less students in out-of-district placements. So, and less students requiring out-of-district transportation. So that was a big help to us. And also McKinney-Vento, that's our homeless transportation. We're finding that we haven't had to utilize that as much as we had several years ago. So in one of those adjustments that we made that Dr. Bailey talked about, we backed off on that because looking, I mean, that's, there's no way really to predict that. But currently, we're not utilizing it. So we figured, well, that's an area that we could, you know, possibly cut down. So hopefully, that will not come back to cause us problems next year. But for the time being, we take some savings on that.
So with that, when we had talked about that at the budget subcommittee, we had thought, you know, if we do get a homeless child, that we do have that stabilization fund. So we have to think about it still because it's still a possibility. However, for the point of trying to get this down as low as we physically could, you know, that's one of the things that we took off, so.
So some other small adjustments, just a decrease in contract services. And those could be anything from special education contract services to technology contract services to maintenance and facilities contract services, professional development, a slight increase. I think most of that is coming from some of the dues from the professional organizations that some of us belong to have gone up and an increase in school committee expenses. And that there is attributed to, I increased the advertising line a little bit because we're finding that we're spending more. We have our school spring that we advertise our positions on, but we also need to have a small amount for newspaper advertising such as for this public hearing that's required by law to be advertised, a few other public hearings. And sometimes we do still find it useful to advertise for some positions such as, you know, a cafeteria position or a custodian or a maintenance position, that those folks that are looking for those jobs are not necessarily looking on school spring. So we try to cast a wider net that way. So we talked about what makes up the increases. So we're just going to summarize for you. There are, as you know, five components to the budget. Central office, this is how it's made up. The elementary school budget, 4,032,000. Central office, 515,000. Middle school, 3,495,000. Special education, 31,700. And the district, 4,656,000. For a total of 15,809,858. Now, looking at that, I'm looking at it and I'm saying, hey, what makes up that district budget? Why is that the biggest one there? Well, that's where our tuitions live, our high school tuitions, not our special education tuitions, but our high school tuitions and our transportation. So two big fixed costs that live in that district budget, so. If I was watching this presentation, that would probably be one of the questions I had, so I wanted to explain that.
Kristen, can you explain how much the town would be responsible for?
Yep, we've got that coming up. So Chapter 78 is a state aid to the schools. So for this year, we're scheduled right now to receive 6,433,462. So that'll go towards, you know, our total budget. The increase over FY '22 is 35,760. So Mr. Tebbs, you were spot-on when you said the tuition's increased, but what the state is paying us for certainly hasn't. Acushnet is getting the minimum $30 per people increase based on the Chapter 70 formula. So that comes out to 35,760, okay? So when you look at it, our FY '23 budget is 15,89858. Our dollar increase is just over 460,000 and that's a 3% increase. Chapter 78 is 6,433,462. And that makes up approximately 41% of the budget. The town contribution is the remaining portion and that's about 59%. 9,376,396, yes.
Do you recall the town contribution?
It's going, the town contribution is going up and the Chapter 70 is going down. So at one point, it was pretty much, you know, 50/50 and now it's swung the other way. I can look that up from last year, I don't recall it off the top of my head, but it was, Chapter 70 was paying for more than 41% and the town was contributing, you know, less than 59%. But that's something I can look up.
And just in summary, I just want to reiterate that our principals and teachers have put in many requests that were cut. You know, we were up to 5.8% increase. At first, it felt like we were cherry-picking little things, but over time, it was over $100,000 that we were able to cut because we are trying to be reasonable. And I just want to say, as far as the nurse goes, like one thing I forgot to mention is that we can't administer medication. So you can only imagine a parent gets the phone call daily when there's no nurse, that they now have to come into school to medicate their child on a daily basis. It's very frustrating. So we've had this issue for weeks this year. We're hoping with that third nurse, we're going to, you know, the issue will not be there anymore, but.
So Dr. Bailey, to that point, so looking at what's budgeted for the two new positions and the nurse and given the challenges that you talked about in finding nurses, I'll be honest, it struck me as somewhat light. So I don't know if that's the market rate or if we're going to be able to find somebody for what's in the budget, but it just struck me as, you know, is that doable given the challenges in the job market right now?
We have found someone that we're bringing on this year. And she's an LPN and she's working towards her RN. But she's very interested in staying on. So it's going to work out, I believe, I mean, let's hope. It's got to be better than it was at the beginning of the school year, what we were going through. And I give a lot of credit to our principals, our director of student services. They were putting on their nursing hats and doing what they could do. You know, we can't administer medication and that's where we saw a lot of frustration from families. So this is very much needed.
So just, I looked up last year's.
One statement that be connected with the, the question came about the amount of aid per, you know, per year and why it's almost level funded. One factor in the reimbursement formulas is the real estate wealth of the community. And if you notice, Acushnet is really changing and having a lot of enhanced real estate taxable wealth. And so therefore, that formula comes in there. You know, the, you know, Acushnet is not an economically striving community, but moving into more of a higher-level income with amount of real estate, you know, of wealth. So therefore, that's why you see that it's just staying flat. And it's reading, you know, reading about the amount of wealth, you know, maybe Chapter 70 increasing all over the state. And we're saying we're leveled and that's one of the basic factors. So when you look around or drive around Acushnet, seeing all these big beautiful homes going up and, you know, that is one of the reasons why. And also, the number of students have not increased dramatically either with that building, you know.
So that, John, that's a very good point that you brought up. So that was my major concern is that, off the top of my head, I know nine houses being built right now. And they're all large three-bedroom, two-bath houses, you know, and the ranges from 500,000 to 900,000. My concern is when they're all complete. hundred thousand to nine hundred thousand. My concern is when they're all completed at the end of the summer, who's moving into them? Families, right? What if they're all high school students? What do we do? So again, we tried to be as conservative as we could with this budget, however, also thinking that the worst might happen, and all of a sudden, our budget goes out the window, and we have to revamp everything again. So I think the three percent is very conservative.
Yes.
Considering what could, what's happening now, and what potentially could happen by the end of the summer.
Also, the town's ability to pay is, is increased as well. You know, it's, so with all those factors. You know, you find, when you look at the birth rates, except for the spike of the seventy-eight blizzard, you know, it's just...
We've got COVID babies coming in too now. Don't forget, in five, six years.
Could be. Could be, but I, that, you know, having a dramatic increase, a lot of those homes that are being built probably will have one child, you know, no child.
In Akushnet?
Yeah.
No, that's not going to be the case.
But if it's moving, that's why we've had an increase in the, the numbers in our budget. Half of the tuition has basically probably been on, on new arrivals. So I think the point's well taken.
But, you know, with this budget, we are not getting everything we want. I just want to put it out there. We, we've spent hours combing through line by line to make necessary cuts, things that we could live with. And we think this is a very fair proposed budget for next year. We do have, we just want to go over capital requests.
And one thing real quick, I was able to look that up from last year. So the town contribution last year was fifty-eight percent. And this is based on the Chapter 70 funds as of this time last year. So sometimes it goes through several iterations, but as of this time last year, I was reporting the town contribution was fifty-eight percent, and the Chapter 78 was forty-two percent. So it's...
Do you know the number on that? Was it eight, eight point eight about?
Yeah, so the town contribution last year was eight million, eight, at this time of the budget last year, based on what we presented and the information we had from the state at the time. Sometimes things change by, by the time we get to July 1.
Yep.
But it was eight million, nine hundred and fifty-one thousand, seven hundred and seventy-nine.
Okay.
All right. So we do have two capital requests that we have included for your review. One is one that you, you've both seen, you've seen both of these over the past several years. We've been fortunate to have some funds every year funded by town meeting to do some roof preventative maintenance. As you know, we're getting a large section of our elementary school roof replaced, but it's not the entire part of the roof of the elementary school, and it is not this building either. So the areas of the roofs that are not getting replaced are going on twenty years old, and we do find that we do have some, some leaks that we need to repair. So we'd like to continue to request that we fund that article, the roof preventative maintenance at fifteen thousand. And the parking lot and road repair, that one there, we've had that often on over the years to repair sections of our roadways here. Most recently, we repaired the road behind Ford Middle School, behind the central office, behind the gym, going up to the pump station. So we were able to repair that. We repaired coming in from Middle Road several years ago. And now we feel that it's very important to finish off that, what we call, what I call the new parking lot that was made, probably about six or seven years ago. That has only the first coat, or the first few coats on it. It, we never came back and finished it. So this is the top coat and the line painting. And that figure of forty-five thousand is what I received from the DPW for an estimate of what it would take to properly finish that parking lot. So our fear is that if we don't complete that project, that perhaps we're doing damage by not having those top coats on it over the, over the next several years. So that's what we're looking for, for that.
For the capital requests, Kristen, I just want to let the committee, I don't know if you remember from last year, but we had, what, like nine or ten capital requests? And we went through all of that, and were able to use grants and what, everything we could find to get those completed. So we'd only ask for the bare minimum of what needed to get done that grants couldn't cover. So I just want to let that be known. Went over that.
I think we had a roof article last year, the antenna, which I'll have an update for that probably at the next school committee meeting. I don't think that we're going to need those funds anymore. So that's something that we will discuss with the town based on some current information. And there was one more, I believe, I can't recall off the top of my head now, but we, but we did pare it down.
There was a door.
Yeah, the gymnasium, yes, of course, the gym wall. Yeah, the gym wall. So we did that. But actually, the, what we deferred was upgrading security cameras. We just had a few more to upgrade. We took care of tile replacement with some funds that we had. The rooftop condensers here at Ford Middle School, we took care of that. We didn't do anything with driveway repair. We were able to purchase a utility work vehicle out of our own, out of our own funds, and we contributed to the special education stabilization fund out of our own funds. So we really pared, as Mrs. Gomes said, we really pared that down last year, too. So this year, we're just looking for the roof preventative maintenance and the parking lot, two things that we know that we feel are very important to keep up with. And... Any questions?
Any questions? No? I'd like to thank, you know, Dr. Bailey, and Kristen, and Kelly, everyone who was involved in helping the two of us really whittle this thing down, because it was, it was a beast. And going through, seemed like a thousand line items, each and everyone asking for explanations, and how can we do it, and what can we do, and are there grants, right? Famous word, is there a grant we can use for something? And everybody did.
It's been hours of time on both of your parts, and it's volunteer. So I appreciate us coming together to get this work done.
No, I really think...
We're standing in a good spot, given the inflation in today's economy, right?
I don't want to jump in too soon, I don't know, you know, on the, on the hearing. But, you know, I, I think of a vote on commending the budget committee and the staff, you know, Dr. Bailey and her staff, you know, for putting this budget together. Because I found it a, you know, you know, all the work that went into it, when I went line item by line item, that there was a, you know, it's a great deal of scrutiny and insight done into this particular budget. So I don't know if a, you know, vote at this time would be, you know, for, you know, commending them, you know, or not, is an order. All of that to the chair to decide.
Well, I'll echo those sentiments to the staff as well.
I don't think we need to vote.
I don't think we need to vote, but thank you.
Thanks is enough.
And I also want to just say, Kristen, you always do a really fantastic job of presenting these details. I think in a way that's very clear. The community doesn't, I mean, looking at a school budget can be really confusing, and you just always do a really great job of just breaking it down and simplifying it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Well, I try to look and see where I would have a question, or, you know, I think others would have a question. And when we see, you know, for someone like myself who deals with big amounts of the budget all the time, you know, an increase of three percent, that doesn't sound too bad. But then when you say that's four hundred thousand, well, that's a lot of money, even when you're dealing, to me, with fifteen million, sixteen million. Four hundred thousand is a lot of money to ask the town to support year after year. So that's what, you know, we really like to focus in on, is what makes up that increase, and why is it necessary? And I mean, I wish I didn't have to report that. It's, you know, flying out these doors here, you know, miles down the road to other schools, but that's our reality this year. You know, every year, we seem to have a different driver of the budget, and that's what our, you know, reality is, is this year. So...
But I'll say, asking for the four hundred thousand is better than the original request of the over eight hundred thousand. Do you know what I mean? So, you know, I thank everyone for their time, and we will live with, you know, what we've put forth if the committee should agree to it. But we would propose later on in the agenda that we vote not only on the budget, but on the capital improvement articles as well.
Yeah. Yeah, and that vote is noted later in the agenda. So we will get to that later. So if there are no other comments or questions, if I may request a vote, please to close the public hearing for the FY23 budget.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we're gonna begin our regular school committee meeting now. So if I could have a vote to, a motion to approve, opening our regular school committee meeting this evening.
Point of order, Madam Chairman.
Sure.
When will we have a vote to approve of the budget?
That is later in the agenda, under business manager's report.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. So if I could request a motion to open our regular school committee meeting? Thank you.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We'll begin with the approval of minutes, payroll, and warrants. So if I could request a motion of approval, please, for the minutes of February 8th, 2022?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. If I may request a motion of approval, please, of the executive session minutes of February 8th, 2022 not to be released?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I may request a motion of approval, please, of the minutes of February 15th, 2022?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Finally, if I could request a motion of approval, please, for payroll and warrants?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Okay, moving into delegation. We have one person signed up for delegation. If I can invite James Kelly to the podium, please? Hello, James.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I've met some of you. I will get to meet the others, excuse me, afterwards. I have also been working with the business manager and the superintendent a little bit. My name is Jamie Kelly. I am your interim town administrator. I am glad to meet this committee. I know that you work tirelessly, and it is a very tough job to run a public school system. So I congratulate you on your persistence and your efforts that way. To give you a little bit of background on me, I've been in various communities and management roles. I've also set up HR departments in various communities, separate HR departments for the school and the town combined. I was chair of the state labor board for fifteen years. My background is I am an attorney, I am a mediator, I am a facilitator, and I teach collaboration, mediation, and facilitation. I've been trained in interest-based bargaining as well as normal bargaining. I've been here less than, oh, about a month, I think. And I wanted to come up to talk to you folks tonight because one of the first things I was assigned was to look at your budget, because you've got a town meeting on May 9, and the budget was just starting when I got here. You've heard the superintendent and the business manager talk about your budget. I'd like to talk about how I create a town budget, because I've done it in multiple towns. I had to create three in one year when COVID hit. We were redoing the budget constantly. I looked, basically, I look at the revenue, I look at the mandated cost or budget busters, and then I look at the request from department heads. And then you put a budget together, and you know as well as everybody else who deals with it, in this state, it has to be a balanced budget. And then I, my philosophy is if you have free cash, you use that for your capital items, or you put it in your bank accounts, your stabilization accounts. Because if you use free cash for an operating budget, it isn't there every year, and you can get into trouble. Just move this out of the way a little bit. My analysis of the revenue, because I am someone who believes in transparency, I'd rather have working together than people going off and making assumptions that are erroneous or incorrect, and then coming back and having to rework things. Right now, I'm looking at revenue that includes all of the state aid, and yes, I know it's only the governor's figures, and the legislature will be increasing it, but by how much, we don't know. So you have to base, at this time, your revenue on the unrestricted state aid and Chapter 70 from the state. And I had a meeting with Representative Schmidt today. He sits on Ways and Means. He said that it will increase, but he can't say how much, if at any amount below, above the minimum. So we have to look at the state aid as published in House One. Looking at the state aid, looking at the receipts, looking at all of the local receipts, I'm looking at revenue figures right now that are thirty-four million, three hundred and twenty thousand, seven hundred and fifty-seven. That is an increase of nine hundred and seventy-four thousand and change. The problem now is that we are also facing some serious increases. I saw you folks discussing about the town contribution to education. One thing you forgot are the joint accounts, the insurances, and the pension. Yes, the pension for the non-teacher, and those are going up exponentially. We are looking at a fourteen point five percent increase in health insurance. The problem is you can't use the base, the budget for last year, because you have had a substantial increase of subscribers between July 1 and March. And that looks like it could be a value of over a hundred thousand dollars, if not more, depending on, and I was assuming they were just individuals. If they've got family rates, it could be considerably more. A lot of our employees have been jumping on the health insurance. That means that you're looking at a two hundred and seventeen thousand dollar, two hundred and eighteen thousand dollar increase, not including the new subscribers, just for health insurance. You're looking at a ninety-one thousand dollar increase in pensions. And then I met with the superintendent of Old Colony, and he showed me that we are looking at a hundred and seventy-two thousand and change increase for their assessment. And then there is an increase of about thirty to thirty-five thousand in state, state charges. All in all, it's about... All in all, it's about five hundred and fourteen thousand dollar increase. So that is today. And this is a snapshot of today. Every day between now and May ninth, this is going to change. Where you're going to look at refining the state aid figures. We're going to look at refining the revenue figures as far as local receipts. In effect, we have four hundred and sixty thousand dollars to split between the increases on the town side and the school side. And that does not include any collective bargaining increases on the town side. So it's not a rosy picture. Town is also looking at a hundred and fifteen thousand and growing deficit in the snow and ice account. And we're looking at about a two hundred thousand dollar deficit in the public safety overtime account.
I have a question. Sure. Is there anything in free cash right now?
Free cash hasn't been certified. And it'll be a minimum of a month. We might not know till May what's in free cash. And that really should be for your stabilizations and your capital expenses.
I'm just curious if there was an estimate already? Okay, thank you.
Not even close.
Never is. It never is.
The town did not close the books until this weekend.
Right. If I ask a question?
That's why I'm here.
I'm unfamiliar with the, the town health insurance. Sounds like it's a perennial, you know, exponential.
Not to that, not to that size.
What's that?
Not to that size. Fourteen point five percent?
Sure. But even a five percent increase is substantial, right?
You're looking at some of the smaller group purchasing around, somewhere between five to eight percent this year. The larger group purchasing groups like Maya is somewhere between two to five percent. You are not in any group purchasing. You're, the town of Acushnetz Health Insurance, for whatever reason, when you left some of the larger group purchasing entities and went out on your own, means you have far little, a far smaller pool to spread losses around. And you have over eight to twelve catastrophic cases within that pool. That catastrophic is classified by the Harvard Pilgrim as being costing them over fifty thousand dollars a case and some of them are in the six figures.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't know anything about that. I guess my question was, how many options do people work in a town with multiple plans that they could choose from?
There aren't multiple plans. Harvard Pilgrim Health Plan, HMO, or PPO. You can have a family plan, a OnePlus, or an individual. And then you have your retirees with the wraparound enhanced plan.
I was just curious.
You have to also factor into that, that the retirees that are under sixty-five, the town is still paying their sixty percent share. It is a budget buster.
Yeah.
And it is a budget buster that has to be addressed in the future. But right now, because it's so late in the game, you would not be able to change to any other provider.
Mr. Kelly, thank you for sharing this information with the committee this evening. I do want to keep us on agenda, but, but Doc, go ahead, John, and ask your question.
One question, you know, on, on the history of, you know, state reimbursement. You mentioned earlier that you were taking the lower figure.
The governor's figure.
The governor's figure. And what has happened in the past is when the governor's figure and all the budgets, let's say the school department's budget has been approved by the town meeting, that the figures come in that are somewhat, not somewhat, but slightly higher than the low vault figure of the, you know, this governor's budget.
That's correct.
And if, but the school department is the only entity that does not have readjustment in the, in the October meeting. Our budget is set at the April meeting and it's, that is a firm commitment because we have to, you know, start operations in September and so forth. We can't wait for additional money to be, you know, in October. So we have to take, you know, take that into account that if there is, you know, following the, you know, the news items, an increase in, in the, you know, in the, you know, the Chapter Seventy reimbursement, more than what the governor's budget or his statements at this point, we have to watch out that we don't be severe on the school department budget because it cannot be lifted after that, that April meeting. You follow my point?
Well, I do. And just so, you, the legislature will, the House number will come in, then it'll go to the Senate number and then it'll go to conference committee. This year, it'll have to be by the end of June or July because it's an election year, the legislative session will be over. But we will know pretty much where we're going with state aid. But state aid is not really where you get a lot of your money. It's from the tax levy.
We just talked about earlier what.
And it's from local receipts. And there is nothing going to be left on the table with the tax levy because we've pushed two and a half to the limit.
Okay. Thank you. I'm gonna keep us moving in the agenda, if that's okay. So moving on to new business, Dr. Bailey, your report?
Yes. Personnel report, you have that in your packet. You see that since the last meeting, we have hired two new staff members. We have one announced retirement effective the end of the school year and we do have a transfer. Mr. Gallivan, who is our current academic coach, is transferring over to become the new assistant principal at Ford Middle School, effective on Monday. And he's actually here tonight and I would actually like to call him up to the podium to introduce himself to the committee. And I know you saw him a month or two ago, but.
I was just gonna say, hi again. Thank you, Dr. Bailey, committee members. Yes, Monday's the new world for me and it's exciting. I've been at Acushnetz for about four years now. And so it's exciting to take on to this new role in, in this leadership role. I really love Acushnetz, you know, you have really supportive families. I've worked in the school as the eighth grade advisor, as the Harry Potter advisor. So I've worked a lot with the community in your book advisor, which was the most fun outside of teaching. I've been a social studies teacher and now as the academic coach. I started taking classes in leadership at Providence College. And now that this position opened up, it was the perfect timing. So I'm really excited to stay in district, work at the middle school where I started off after being in district for a little bit. I'm really big on data, as you saw at the last meeting, I talked about it for about thirty minutes, but it's fun. And effective PLCs is another big part for me, professional learning community with teachers. I worked on one today with some cross-grade level after school. And it was great to work with them. They have great staff here and also building strong partnerships. So I'm excited, can't wait to get started on Monday.
We're excited to have a team.
Congratulations. Good luck in your new role.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any questions on personnel report?
No, I just wanna thank Scott Johnson for his time here at the elementary school and at the middle school. Thank you for the transportation help that you've given us parents to pick up and drop off. I'll never forget that. So congratulations in your new endeavor and we wish you well.
That's right. All the best, Scott, thank you.
So Mr. Johnson's last day will be Friday, but I think he'll be best known as the guy with the QR codes.
Yes.
And the forms, like operations, it was wonderful. So thank you so much, Mr. Johnson. Any questions on the personnel report? Okay, so moving on, in your packet, you've got a few things in there from the REIT's Collaborative. I'm going to queue up a video, but before I do, I'm gonna call your attention to page three in the packet that looks like this. Okay? I just wanna highlight, you know, REIT's Collaborative is requesting that each member school committee vote to approve, one, the reasons for the capital reserve and, two, the limit on the balance. And then you can see that the reasons are listed there. But basically, when we met as a board of directors, Teresa Craig, who is the executive director, said it would probably just be best if she created a short little video to talk to you about the collaborative and about the intent of the presentation today. And then we would need a vote and a signature from the school committee chair. Okay? So, Mr. Gary, if you could queue that up, that would be great.
Hello, I am your representative Teresa Craig, Executive Director of REIT's Collaborative. I attended the executive director for the past eleven years. And this is.
Hi, I'm Lindsay Elmeres. I am a business manager of the REIT's Collaborative and have operated for years. I want to thank you, the school committee chair, the members of the school committee, the superintendent and the community for the opportunity to present this information via video. As we come to you with this request regarding our capital plan, I would like to provide a brief overview of REIT's programs, services and locations. REIT's Collaborative was established in nineteen seventy-four. Your district is one of eighteen member districts that form REIT's Collaborative. As a member district, your superintendent is annually appointed as a member of the REIT's Board of Directors. The Board of Directors meets six times per year or more, various subcommittees meet throughout the year. The special education administrators from member districts meet three to four times per year as an advisory group and engage and work as specific program subcommittees. REIT's is one of twenty-five collaborators across the state of Massachusetts. REIT's provides many services to our eighteen member districts and provides services to an additional forty-five districts in Southeastern Mass. and beyond. REIT's programs include REIT's Academy, which serves students with disabilities that impact their social, emotional wellness. REIT's Deaf and Hard of Hearing Program, which serves students ages three to twenty-two with a deaf or hard of hearing. We also provide teachers of the deaf educational audiology and speech and language consultative services to students within their districts. The Deaf and Hard of Hearing Program contracts with early intervention for specialized services for infants and toddlers with a cuss hearing up to age three. REIT's Clinic provides comprehensive diagnostic and evaluation services, including psycholab, neuropsych, risks and personality assessments by our clinical psychologists, CAPS and educational audiology evaluations by our audiologists, speech and language evaluations and other assessments by our licensed professionals. REIT's district services provide a variety of specialized personnel within districts, such as speech language pathologists, UTIs, PCs, ATEs, school psychologists, school counselors, all for short and long-term solutions, and also our newest family success partnership counselors. REIT's provides professional development, such as mentoring, educator evaluation for administrators, mental health and trauma, and other specific topics under request. We have eight collateral locations in Norton, one classroom at Brooklyn Regional Vocational Technical High School, one classroom at West Bridgewater Middle Senior High School, and the two academy schools located in Middleborough, which we will refer to in this presentation. As you can see, we're very proud of the services we provide to students, families and staff of our member districts. REIT's Collaborative is seeking to formally establish the reason and limit for the REIT's Capital Reserve Fund through approval of member school committees. REIT's Collaborative is requesting that each member school committee vote to approve, first, the reasons for the capital reserve and, second, the limit on the balance. The reasons for the reserve as approved by the REIT's Board of Directors are maintenance and improvement of REIT's properties and leased properties to provide funding for payment of the lease for REIT's Academy Public Day School location during periods of time when enrollment is below expectations and to prepare to purchase the location of the Academy Public Day School to eliminate the expense of the lease beyond ten years. The limit on the balance as approved by the REIT's Board of Directors is four million dollars for the reasons identified above. Please refer to the Capital Fund Reserve Regulations, which are included in your handouts on page one. I'm gonna turn it over to Lindsay. REIT's Collaborative currently has two capital fund accounts. The Capital Maintenance Fund is established by the Board on January fourth, two thousand thirteen. The intent of the fund is to provide small annual funding to be used for larger capital maintenance projects to maintain our current facilities. The second is the Capital Building Project Fund. This fund was established by the Board on June seventh, two thousand and eighteen. The intent of the fund is to provide for a new or renovated facility for the REIT's Academy program K through six and seven through twelve. A feasibility study indicated that the existing facility would be costly to renovate and expand as needed. After discussions with various financial institutions, the financing for construction of a new building on site was not feasible. I would like to note that collaborators in the state of Massachusetts are not entitled to building project funds through the Massachusetts School Building Authority. The current combined balance held in these two funds is approximately one million, one hundred and eighty thousand dollars. The two REIT's Academy schools, pre-K through grade six and seven through twelve, opened for students in a newly renovated location on September seventh, two thousand and twenty-one. This relocation provided an opportunity to expand available placements to include a DESI-approved preschool classroom, which is already enrolled with students. The new schools have a shared wellness center slash gym, a cafeteria and kitchen, designated classrooms for art, music, vocational programming and makers place slash libraries. There are outdoor spaces for field sports and basketball. There is playground equipment that is appropriate for elementary students. This space is welcoming and equitable learning environment for students with disabilities who are referred for placement at REIT's Academy. In planning specifically for the next five years, REIT's Collaborative Board of Directors has approved a five-year capital improvement plan that encompasses both the existing capital maintenance fund and the capital building project fund. The five-year capital improvement plan on page one of your handout prioritizes improvements to existing facilities while also allocating funds to provide financial support to purchase or continue to lease forty-four Bedford Street for students in REIT's Academy. The details of this plan over the next five years do not require a school committee approval but are provided on page two of your handout to support the reason for the capital reserve fund and the limit on the balance. This approval requires action by you as the school committee members of REIT's Collaborative and the signature of the school committee chair. REIT's Collaborative is seeking to formally establish the reason and limit for REIT's Capital Reserve Fund through all of our member school committees. Just as a reminder, REIT's Collaborative is requesting that each member school committee vote to approve, first, the reasons for the capital reserve and, second, the limit on the balance. The reasons for the reserve as approved by the REIT's Board of Directors are maintenance and improvement of REIT's properties and leased properties, provide refunding for payment of the lease for REIT's Academy Public Day School location during periods of time when enrollment is below expectations and to prepare to purchase the location of the Academy Public School to eliminate the expense of the lease beyond ten years. The limit on the balance as approved by the REIT's Board of Directors is four million dollars for the reasons above. The eighteen member districts of REIT's Collaborative have provided consistent support and vision over the past forty-seven years. School committee members and superintendents have sought to ensure specialized intervention for the students with disabilities who require services provided by the highly qualified staff at REIT's Academy, REIT's Deaf and Hard of Hearing Program, REIT's Clinic, REIT's District Services and within the many specialized services provided to school districts. Thank you for taking this additional statement. Thank you for taking this additional step to secure an equitable learning space for those students attending REIT's collaborative now and in the future. Thank you.
So the school committee does have to take a vote on this. So if I could request a motion to approve the reasons for the REIT's collaborative capital reserve fund as presented and the limit of $4 million on the amount that may be held in reserve.
So moved.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you. And one last thing before I conclude my report. This does not require a vote, but we, I just wanted to inform the committee that we'd like to put in a parking lot near the business and superintendent's entrance. Right now, the parking in that area is a very small lot, very tight and oftentimes people don't have spaces to park. So we met with DPW. They are going to be doing the work. They want to get started and I told them, let's wait. I want to make sure that nobody on the committee had any issues with it, but they want to do a small lot. Right when you drive in, there's like dead space, it's like a lot of green grass area. It would be a small drive-in lot there in front of the entrance and it would only be $15,000. That would include all the layers of asphalt and it would be completely done, you know, it would be completed, not like the other one that Mrs. Flynn spoke about that we're doing it several years later. And the reason why it's, you know, we're saving is because a lot of the materials the DPW is helping us out with. So we just desperately need more parking spaces. Our bus people park sometimes two and three deep. It's unsafe. And like I said, oftentimes we have people coming in and there's no place to park and that's supposed to be like a fire lane over there. So I wanted to make sure that if anybody had any concerns before we move forward with the project.
I'd like to just also, this was something that was already talked about when we had done the new parking lot. So this is nothing new. It was something that was already talked about, so just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention.
Okay, thank you. And that concludes my report tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Bailey. Business managers report. Mrs. Flynn, back to you.
To me, sure. So all I have, FY '22 budget materials are in your packet for your review. You can take a look at them if anyone has any questions. I'll certainly take those. I know we talked a lot about our FY '23 budget tonight, so not too many changes since last month in the FY '22 budget, but they are noted on your materials.
Thank you. Okay.
All right. So the last thing I have, I believe, is to take a vote on the FY '23 budget. So I think that we should, we'll need two separate votes. One is on the FY '23 budget and the second is on the capital request. So the first one will be to take a vote to approve the FY '23 budget of $15 million. Oh, this is, this one is Lori. Hopefully it's the copy and not my eyesight.
Okay. If I could request a motion of approval for the FY '23 budget as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion about the budget presented this evening? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you. And then the final request I have for a motion would be to accept the school department warrant article requests, that we can forward those to the town administrator's office. One, the first one is the preventative maintenance on the roof for $15,000 and the second is the road and parking lot repair to finish the new middle parking lot for $45,000. So that's a total of $60,000.
Okay. If I could request a motion of approval for the warrant requests presented?
So moved.
Article requests?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Flynn?
That's it for me.
Okay, we have some communications that were added to your packet for your review. We do not have any executive session tonight, so if I could request a motion to adjourn?
No move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And our next regular school committee meeting will be held here in the library on Tuesday, April 5th at 5:30 PM. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.